Hello, and welcome to the... Hold on one second. Lenny, ready? Hi, welcome to the January 25th, 2017 zoning board meeting for the town of Merrimack. Tonight, Lenny, you will be sitting in as a member tonight instead of an alternate because we are going to be short a couple of people. You're... I appreciate your input. The next ZBA meeting will be February 22nd, 2017. Before we get started, we do have four members this evening, so I'm going to bring this out before we get into everything. With the form, that means that all petitions coming forward need to get majority vote, which means you need to get three yeses. If you get a split, two yeses, two noes, petition is denied. So, just want to make sure that everyone's aware of that. If you choose to wait, we have a fuller board because we are missing two members tonight. You're more than welcome to do so. You can proceed forward. We'll get to that in a moment. If everyone could... If... Just let me start the meeting and I'll get right into that. If everyone could rise for the pledge of allegiance. Tony?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and just for all.
If you could read the preamble, Rich?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For the benefit of those who have not attended these hearings, the procedure is as follows. The petitions will be heard in the order that they were posted in a legal notice. However, the chairman may change the order with consent of the board to expedite the public hearing as appropriate. The board will treat all petitioners, their representatives, abutters, and other interested parties fairly and with respect. We allow each petitioner to state why his or her petition should be granted. Following the petitioner's statement, any abutter or interested party is allowed to speak for or against the petition. In the interest of getting all the facts, we will go around a second time. The board may elicit testimony at any point, but we cannot allow any cross discussion. All questions must be directed to the board. Also, we ask that you do not repeat yourself or your neighbor's testimony. If you wish to just indicate concurrence, please do so. After hearing all the facts regarding a petition, the chairman will close the public hearing and the board will deliberate and vote on the petition before moving on to the next petition. You can expect fairness and impartiality by this board. The zoning board is empowered to legalize the breaking of the town's zoning ordinance, and this is not done lightly. State law and local ordinances set out the criteria that must be met in order for the board to grant your petition. I remind you that it is your responsibility to prove your case so that this board has justification for granting the petition. The minimum requirements are listed in the form you receive from the community development office, and it would be helpful if you'd proceed on that basis. Please turn off all cell phones and pagers. And would all those who are planning to testify, please stand to be sworn in?
If you plan on speaking tonight, you need to please stand up to be sworn in. Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? All right. Based on the current agenda, we're actually items... This is for Franklin Savings Bank, and I'll get to your question in a second. Agenda item five, we're going to move that ahead of agenda item four, just because in context, you're looking for a second sign and then you're looking for the variance on the size of the sign. So, if the second sign is not approved, then there's no sense of going forward on the variance. Did you have a question, sir?
Yes. If a vote were taken and it was...
Can you use that mic right there? Sorry.
If a vote were taken and...
Oh, it's on, sir.
Oh, sorry. I hate...
It is?
Yeah, it is. Yeah, okay, yep, you're good. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If a vote were taken and it was two-two, could we move the vote without prejudice to the next meeting?
No, you'll have to decide if you want to move before they hear the case. Because if it were two-to-two, it would be essentially denied, and then you would have to either appeal that or apply with a different variance.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so, starting with our first hearing, our first case is the Specialist Automotive and Truck N H LLC petitioner and Bus Wowsky Properties LLC... Sorry if I didn't say that correctly. Come on down. Special exception under section 2.02.3(c)(1) of the zoning ordinance to permit the sale and storage of new and used motor vehicles. The parcel is located at 422 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial District, Town Center Overlay, and 500-year flood hazard area, tax map 5D-4 lot 004, case number 2017-01. Are you... Come on down. Come on. Come on. Can't hear you, I'll be back there. Ah, you sit right there. There's a clipboard. I need you to sign in, and then make sure that the light on the mic is bright green.
We don't bite.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you could just state your name?
Dustin Jackson.
Okay. Make sure you speak into the mic.
Dustin Jackson.
All right, good. All right, Mr. Jackson? You have special exception. You have it listed out as far as A, B, C, and D. If you could give us kind of a quick idea of what we're looking at here today, and then go through A, B, C, and D, and just read that into the record, that would be great.
Okay. Basically, we're just looking for a special exception to...
Can you... I'm sorry, I hate to... Can you pull the mic a little bit closer to you? Just got to make sure it gets picked up. All right.
So, we're looking to acquire a special exception just to do low-volume used vehicle sales in addition to, you know, the business that we already do to supplement the income for the business. So...
Well, you have the... Under the special exception, you have the A, B, C, and D.
Yep.
You just want to read through those and stop after each one?
So, basically, specific sites and appropriate location for such a use in terms of overall community development. It would help community development because we would be providing an additional service to the community that we already serve without any adverse impact on the community. There would be no additional construction, or noise, traffic, anything like that.
Okay. Hold on, hold on. We're going to stop between each one, just because we may have questions.
Oh, sure.
All right. Is there any questions on the first one?
Can you speak in a little louder voice?
Sure. I'm sorry. Do you want me to go over it again, or...
Yeah, there you go. The mic kicked in. Yeah, the mic kicked in. Yeah. Don't worry about it. You're good, you're good.
Okay.
You can go on to B.
All right. So, the uses developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood because the existing location is already home to a vehicle repair business, and addition of used... Low-volume vehicle sales shouldn't impact the neighborhood due to the existing business being related in nature and the property capable of accommodating the additional use.
So, I had a question regarding that.
Sure.
So, you're talking low volume. I mean, what are we talking about? 10, 15, 20, 30 cars?
Yeah, probably like five or seven.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I mean, it's... Our main business is repair, you know? So, essentially, it's just a few...
Because there was really no place I saw that you could put the cars like right in front, like most dealerships, with the cars right up front. Didn't seem like a place you could really...
Yeah, well, it's not really... I'm not intending on selling the places you use, car dealer, you know? Most sales can be made online now, so having them out front with flags on them isn't really, you know, a major concern of mine, since it's not our main source of income, anyway.
Now, are these cars that you're... Are you buying and selling, or are you just, you know, picking cars up at auction and selling? I'm just...
Yeah, I mean, buying and selling. I mean, stuff like that.
Okay. All right, but you... So, okay. But you're looking at about maybe a half a dozen cars at a time?
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. Nothing high-volume.
Okay. You can go on to C.
Sure. C, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians because we don't have any crosswalks or major foot traffic at the business. And then, we don't foresee any significant addition to the traffic generated by the current business due to the low volume of the sales that we'd be making.
Okay. Any questions? D?
Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed uses because, as an existing repair business, the property offers adequate storage capacity. Existing business has everything needed to add this service to the current offering.
Questions? So, the low volume, you're not going to have, like, I mean, not... You know, I guess like when I'm thinking tar sales, I see you get the big trucks, you know, the big 18-wheelers coming in. You're going to have that coming in on a regular basis and frequent? Just because the road and where that turn is and, you know...
Yeah, no, I mean, the... I know what you're talking about. I mean, we wouldn't have any deliveries on... In any... In that type of scale, you know? Even if the vehicles come in on a trailer, it would be a small, one-car trailer, you know?
Okay.
So, like I said, it's not... It's not going to be a high-volume deal. It's just to supplement the existing business.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions? Why don't we start with Tony?
Are you going to add any new employees? Oh, just a minute, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Are you going to add any more new employees?
As of right now, the current staff should be able to handle what we intend on doing. So, at this time, no.
Okay, thank you.
I'm interpreting from the plan, the area that's been shaded six parking spots. Is the area you intend to use for this portion of the business?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Rich? Any other questions, concerns? I mean, it's pretty straightforward. Anything else that you wanted to add?
No.
No? Okay. All right. So, I'm going to open up the public forum. Is there anybody here that would like to speak in favor? Is there anybody that would like to speak against? All right, so I'll close the public hearing. That being said, thoughts of the board? Any questions, comments, consideration, motions?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the special exception for Specialist Automotive and Truck New Hampshire LLC and Busowsky Properties LLC. So, the special exception under 2.02.3(c)(1) of the zoning ordinance to permit the sale and storage of new and used motor vehicles. Parcels located at 422 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial District, Town Center Overlay, and 500-year flood hazard area, tax map 5D-4 lot 004, case 2017-01. And the staff recommends, along with this, that you obtain site plan approval from the planning board for the proposed use of the site prior to doing anything.
Second? If there's a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Four-zero. Congratulations.
All right, thank you.
You do have 30 days for somebody to come back and appeal or the approvals, but so proceed within the first 30 days if you want to risk other than that. Congratulations and good luck.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next is Franklin Savings Bank petitioner and K R G Merrimack Village LLC owner, variance under section 17.10.3d of the zoning ordinance to permit a second ground sign on a parcel, whereas ground sign already exists. The parcel is located at 1 Dobson Way in the C2 General Commercial in Ocrifer Conservation District, tax map 4D lot 080, case number 2017-03. If you could sign in, make sure that your mics are on, and if you're going to be in front of the boards, if you could use the portable mic, that would be great.
We have a lot of boards, so...
Yes. Do you have the form that was given to you by community development that has the five points of law? Oh, okay. Never mind. I... No. Hold on. Yeah, I think we have it. It's... For the case... For variances, there's a... The community development center gives out a sheet that has the five points of law that lists things such as granting this variance to substantial justice, impact on the neighborhood. Generally, we have people who are coming before the board to read off of that because then we base our questions on that. You seem to have taken that five points of law and incorporated it into an applicant's narrative, which is... So, what we're going to have to do is we're actually going to have to have you read the applicant's narrative into the record. We need you to stop after each Roman numeral, so if we have any questions, we can ask them at that time.
Very well.
Okay? So, if you could proceed along those lines, we can move forward. Does the board understand how we're doing this? Okay.
I just think that, you know, if we do this in narrative form, that we're at least acknowledging each point of law, so I'm going to try to pull it up.
Okay. So, if you could proceed forward with the narrative, the property with Roman numeral one, that would be excellent. If you could just state your name for the record as well.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff, thank you very much for allowing us to meet with you this evening to present our application. My name is Richard Peeler. I'm Paramount Partners in Quincy, Massachusetts. I'm a consultant to Franklin Savings Bank. And with me this evening is Ron McGoon, the president and CEO of Franklin Savings Bank, and also Jason Hill with the engineering firm of T F Moran out of Bedford, New Hampshire. At this point, I would like to introduce Mr. McGoon, the president of Franklin Savings Bank.
Good evening. I just want to take a couple moments to give you a little history on the bank, just a quick rundown. We're a small, independent community bank. We are headquartered in Franklin, New Hampshire. We have seven branches currently. This will be our eighth branch. We are a community bank, and as such, we have a history of being in business since 1869. We consider ourselves to be good corporate citizens and give back to the community, and we are really looking forward to bringing community banking to Merrimack. So, thanks for the opportunity to present tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, just to orient you and what our plans are...
You can take the cordless mic if it's easier for you.
The bank has entered into a lease agreement with the owners of Merrimack Village Shopping Center. The location, and this is the gas station, the Gulf Gas Station, and the parcel that the bank will be leasing is a portion of this piece that's on Dobson Way, that actually fronts on Dobson Way. This is from this aerial. It would be this piece right here, which has laid fallow for quite a while. We entered into discussions with the owners of the shopping center about a year ago, and most recently, we did seek and receive approval for the planning board and what the bank will be proposing to construct on that vacant piece of land is this building. We are pretty proud of the design. We hope that the town feels the same way. I think the planning board did, but we hope the citizens of Merrimack do as well. The bank, being a community bank, is very community-oriented, participates in many activities in all the communities that it has a... That it does operate its business, and looks forward to doing the same here in the town of Merrimack. As you can see, the first item that we're seeking relief on is to have what most people consider a second pole sign on the site. There are a number of reasons why we are seeking that, but the first thing I would like to point out is that in the design of the building, compared to many of the other new developments, even just across Dobson Way, our signage is quite modest. We didn't want the signage to overwhelm the design of the building. But being a... Banks are in the retail business, and signage is a critical part of that for a multitude of reasons, not just from a branding perspective, but also for... Especially for a new business to the town. The ability to... For people, pedestrians, motorists, that traverse by the location, for them to be able to say, oh, that's where Franklin Savings Bank is located. So, for those two reasons, and others that we will get into, we feel that it is critical to the success of the bank's business and operation, long-term success, for the pole sign, and that's why we're here before you this evening. So, if I may, as you instructed, Mr. Chairman... And... And reading from the... From our narrative. Relief requested. This is for one.
If it would help, I could read you the... If it helped, I can read you the questions on the... And you can answer the questions accordingly, if that would help. If that's... I can read you the questions that... The five points of law that we need to have discussed. This is the one. Okay. The...
You want us to read the arguments for...
I have the five points of law. Why don't I just read them and you answer each of the questions?
Very good.
All right. So, the first question is, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest.
The granting of the requested variance would not substantially alter the characteristics of the neighborhood, nor would granting the variance threaten public health, safety, or welfare. Thus, granting the variance would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance, nor would it be contrary to the public interest.
Any questions on that? All right, number two. The spirit of the ordinance is observed because...
Granted, the requested variance will result in substantial justice being done.
That's the next one. This is the one before it. The spirit of the ordinance is observed because...
This is the one. Oh, number... Could you repeat that, Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry.
The spirit of the ordinance is observed because... It's the second point of law.
The hardship upon the applicant where the variance would be denied is not...
That's number five. We're on number two. I'm just going... I'm going off... I'm going... So, you received a form from the community development center that had five points of law, had five questions that needed to be... That need to be answered in order for us to justify the breaking of zoning ordinances. And of the five, you've kind of... You're handed that, so we... When somebody comes before the board, we... They generally read the question and read their answer, wherever, however long their answer will be, but they read their answer based upon that. The five points of law are granting of the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. One, you kind of answered that one. Spirit of the ordinance is observed because... That's number two. Number three is granting the variance would do substantial justice because... Number four is the following reasons: The values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. And then, number five has to do with unnecessary hardship. In order for us to justify the breaking of the zoning ordinance, we need to have justification on each of these points.
Okay.
So, that's in... That's why I'm kind of going through it, trying to take that approach and make it a little bit easier for you.
Right.
Because it wasn't really laid out in the applicant's narrative.
Right, okay. Because the way we wrote this up, it was different than how you're... Resting it, so... Excuse me. These are our cue cards. We're reading from these. Mr. Chairman, do you mind asking that question one more time?
The spirit of the ordinance is observed because... What is the... The spirit of the ordinance is observed how in this variance?
Because we feel that the reason for the signage would be a public benefit to the community. A public benefit in that, being a new business, many people are not going to know that it's there. The building is being... Because of the site constraints, we had to angle the building in a certain way, and so therefore, and we had to push the building back because we also had to provide a wider circulation in order to meet the fire department's requirements, in order to be able to circulate around the building in the event of an emergency. We had originally requested a curb cut on Camp Sergeant Road, so people that were heading south on Camp Sergeant Road would be able to be a small sign at that entry point, and they could take a right-hand turn before reaching the traffic light. That was not something that the planning board would approve. They wanted a... In particular, the fire department wanted a second curb cut on Dobson Way, and as a result... And as a result, we had to move the building and orient the building differently. So that further diminished the visibility along Camp Sergeant Road, and made the visibility for motorists traveling either on Continental Boulevard or Camp Sergeant Road, would have made it very difficult for them to be able to access or see the building. And for that reason, we think that it is also a benefit to have that signage there, so there is no hesitation or, or quick action of, we see it and you don't see it. So we feel that that is something that would be for the public benefit.
Okay. Next one would be granting the variance would do substantial justice. Why?
The hardship upon the applicant where the variance will be denied...
That's number five. We're on number three.
Yeah, granting the requested variance will result in substantial justice being done. That, that's the question.
That's the question, yes.
That's the question. As one looks in the immediate area, there are a number of businesses, and...
Just at that intersection... Need you to have a mic, please, I'm sorry. Might want to hold on to that if you're going to keep standing up.
And just at that intersection, you have the Gulf Station, you have the Burger King, you have the, the Papaginos. As it relates to justice, the question of justice, all of these businesses really benefit by having signage. Signage that our sign in comparison is considerably less. In this chart right here, it, it shows you what the face size and the height of the sign is, and ours is, in most cases, substantially less than. The face of our signs and the height of our signs all comply with zoning. That's not necessarily the case for the other signs that we would have to be competing with, that in some, in some directions, that would actually block a part of our visibility.
Okay.
And that's where we feel that the justice would come in.
Any questions?
Just, just for clarification, the signage that you're showing here, is that the, because we're talking about two, a, a second sign, is that the primary sign or the secondary sign that's shown?
This, this is the, this is the sign that we, we're proposing. Is that your question? You say secondary sign or...
So the, the ordinance, the variance is to permit a second ground sign. And so my question is, is that the first sign or the second?
If I, if I may answer that this way. This is the existing pylon sign. But as you can see, the, the shopping center has two signs, this one and the one on Continental Boulevard. Both of those signs are maxed out, tenants that are already in the plaza that have a right to be on these signs. So there is no opportunity for the bank to be on these pylon signs. The other thing is that, yes, it's a small lot, but this sign is not on our lease premises. There is a... Jason, can you point that out? Where the, the cutout?
This is the lease premises, based on the documents that were associated with the establishment of the, I guess, the shopping plaza. So it comes down this private right-of-way, private roadway, it's, it's a public, open to the public, but it's a private within the development. And it jogs up into the parking area and then towards the right-of-way of Camp Sergeant Road. So the leased area for this property is...
Does not include where the pylon sign for the shopping center is. It's on the...
What, 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 what he's trying to, what he's trying to ask here is, is this the second sign, or is the, it's, it's, it's just real simple. Is it the second sign or is it the first sign? This is the second sign, right?
This is the second sign on map 4D Lot 80, yes.
Where's the first sign for Franklin Savings Bank?
There is none.
So you're putting, you're asking for a second sign based on that lot because there's already a sign there for Shaw's? That, I mean, that's, we're just trying to, okay. All right.
Oh, so there's only, so you guys are only proposing, this is to build one sign, it just happens to be...
Yeah, yes, sir. That would be, that would be exclusive to the bank.
Ah, thank you, I'm, I get it now, thank you.
Okay. I misunderstood.
That's okay.
Any other questions on substantial justice? All right. For the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished.
We don't believe it would be diminished at all. All of the abutting properties are, are commercial in nature, and we don't feel that it would diminish the properties. If anything, we think it would enhance the value of the surrounding properties, given the fact that there is, what will, there will be, a very attractive, really low-intensive business occupying what has been, you know, fellow land for, for quite a while. The bank has even offered the town that it will maintain even the public right-of-way along Camp Sergeant Road in order to maintain, to make it more attractive than what it is today. So we really believe that it will enhance the abutting properties. And the fact that unlike a, a fast food restaurant, which has, will have a lot more cars going in and out, banks, we don't generate that, that much traffic, because a lot of people do their banking online, they don't come as often, but they still want to know that where they're putting their money, they can see it every time they drive by. So we think actually it will greatly enhance the value of the properties around it.
Any questions? Okay. And maybe you can answer this question, you'll, you'll need a mic, but where's the Shaw sign and where's the FSB sign going to be?
The Shaw's sign is, you know, 50 feet into the Dobson Way, you know, frontage. And the FSB sign will be along a different frontage. This property has two frontages, even though one is a public street. So that sign will be in this location.
Are the signs going to be like, like next to each other, or...
No, they'll be, and I don't have a scale, but this is a, is a plan that's to scale, and that's a 40-inch to the, 40 feet to the inch, 20 feet to the inch, so this is 40 feet. By my math, I'm measuring it to be 80 feet.
Okay. So it'll be 80 feet down further than the Shaw's.
80 feet north along Camp Sergeant.
Great. All right. So, no, cool, thank you. Any other questions on that?
Is it one of the perspectives, if you want?
No, he, he pretty much answered my question. All right, and then the last one is unnecessary hardship. So owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because, and one, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general prior, the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because?
Owing to special considerations of this property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance and the specific application of that provision to this property.
That's the question, I'm looking for the answer.
The special condition of the property is in fact that it is a lease parcel that is currently has a ground sign which advertises tenants from an abutting shopping center. Because of this special condition, the property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary to enable to have a reasonable use.
Okay. And then the next question is, the proposed use is reasonable because, because there's...
The use being a, a bank? Or the use for the sign?
The proposed, the, the reason, the proposed use is a reasonable one, and it's reasonable one, why? Is the question.
It's reasonable because, as one looks around that intersection, one can see that this sign is critical to the success of this business. It's, it's critical, it's, 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 it's critical not only to the success of the business, but it's also a public safety matter, a matter of public safety, for the reasons that I mentioned before.
Okay. Does everybody feel that their hardship was answered, or do we need to go to the second question?
I, I just wanted to clarify one thing. You'd said something earlier that sounded like it, it related to this question. You'd mentioned that what you're creating is the second sign, and on the first sign that's technically on the property, you can't put signage out. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I mean, I, I guess it's, I, I think, I think that was answered by that, so...
Any questions? You feel unnecessary hardship has been answered? Okay. Thank you for letting me use that. Any other questions or for gentlemen? Okay. Do you have anything you'd like to add before we go to public?
I'd like to just add one thing about the spirit of the ordinance, just one quick thing that...
Sure.
I would like to say that my understanding is that it basically wants to minimize signage, and it's not to be obnoxious and crowded and just unsightly in general. So we're proposing, we have very far separation on this property, it's unique because, it's a unique condition because of the right-of-way cuts in like 20 feet from the abutting properties, so we're further, our frontage is further back off of this highway than most other properties. And our proposed signage, other than the secondary, having the actual second sign on the site, it's conforming to the, you know, dimensional requirements and things of height requirements, things of that nature. It's a good-looking sign, and I think it meets what you guys are looking for in your ordinance for your overall planning of these signs.
Is it facing this way, or is it facing straight on?
The face, the plaque would face north-south.
North-south, okay.
The other thing, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Question is technically, are there two, two pole signs on the parcel of land? Physically, there is. But one of those signs does, has nothing to do with the bank. That sign doesn't benefit, so it's not like the bank has two pole signs. That pole sign that we're requesting is specific to the bank. And, and as Jason mentioned, it is considerably smaller than any of the signs at that intersection. So is there an existing sign? Yes. But it's not to the benefit, if anything, it's to the detriment of the bank.
Okay.
And that's why we feel it's critical to have that pole sign that's specific to the bank, so there is no confusion on the part of the, of the consumer.
Okay. Excellent. Any questions? All right. So open up to the public, is there anybody out there that'd like to speak in favor? Anybody out there that'd like to speak against? The public hearing's closed. Questions, comments, discussion, motions?
I'll comment. The existing sign, because it's part of the complex as a whole, I interpret as being a directional sign to let people know from that street what's in the complex.
Okay.
So it seems fair and justifiable that the tenant of this particular lot be allowed to have their sign, which is identifying their particular business on the lot. Seems fair and reasonable.
Okay. Rich?
Yeah, I mean, they have a sign that they can't use, so to me, this seems kind of, you know, this really is their one sign, even though we're calling it a variance for a second sign.
Okay. Tony, anything, or give me a motion?
Okey-dokey.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Tony.
Motion. To allow a variance under section 17.10.3D of the zoning ordinance to permit a second ground sign on a parcel, whereas a ground sign has already existed. Parcel is located on 1 Dobson Way in the C2 General Commercial and Aquifer Conservation District, tax map 4D Lot 080, case 2017-03.
Have a second.
Second.
Second it.
With a condition?
Oh, with a condition.
Sorry. Uh, should, uh, staff recommends the approval be conditioned upon obtaining a variance request in case 201702, which would allow the proposed sign to be located within required setback from the right-of-way.
Second.
Sorry, man, second.
Second. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stain 400. All right. Gentlemen, you can just hang tight, I'm going to read the next one in. Franklin's next variance is Franklin Savings Bank, petitioner, and KRG Merrimack Village LLC owner, variance under section 17.10.3B of the zoning ordinance to permit a ground sign within 20 feet of the right-of-way. Parcel is located at 1 Dobson Way in the C2 Commercial, General Commercial and Aquifer Conservation District, tax map 4D Lot 080, case number 2017-02. So, we know where this sign's going. I guess we would be looking for, as it is a variance, we need you to read in the five points of law again to that. I can recite the five points if you need to, but we need you to put that, we need to put that into record, if that is okay, gentlemen.
And, and the only difference being that this is regarding why it's within 20 feet as opposed to why it's a second sign. That's really the only difference in context.
So with that being said, not regarding the second sign, but why it's within 20 feet of the, the right-of-way, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest?
Well, obviously, our narrative isn't consistent with the, the five rules, so may I do it...
That's what I need to have put into record in order to get the variance.
Right. So may I ask you, Mr. Chairman, if you could read, state that, and then I will, I will respond to...
Sure. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest.
No, we don't believe it would be contrary to the public interest. We feel that the, the sign, given it is, it's designed, it's, it's, the size of it, would not impose negativity... with everything else on this side of Dobson Way, as well as this side of Dobson Way.
Okay. All right. So any questions on that? Okay. Next, granting the variance would do substantial justice because...
Granted, the variance, the hardship upon the applicant where the variance to be denied is not outweighed by some benefit to the general public in denying the requested variance.
That's, so hardship is number five. This is number three.
Number three.
Substantial justice.
Substantial justice. If I may, the...
So basically, the question being, letting the sign be within 20 feet would do substantial to the business specifically because...
Can you restate that, please?
So in context, I was just rephrasing that when we're talking about granting the variance would do substantial justice, in this case, we're saying putting it within 20 feet will do substantial justice because...
Because aside from what I said earlier, that we really believe it's well within, it's not within 20 feet. It's actually greater than 20 feet. But if you look at the Burger King, and you look at the Papaginos, and you look at the Gulf Gas Station, they're right on their property line. So in comparison to those, our abutters, we are much more complying, much more in compliance with the zoning than, than our, than our abutters are, and those signs were approved.
Perfect. Thank you.
So for the following reason, any questions? For any of the following reasons, any of the surrounding property, sorry, for the following reasons, the values of surrounding properties will not be diminished...
Not in the least. To the same argument that we, reason that we stated the first time around. We believe that the, the, the location of the sign is substantially back from Camp Sergeant Way. It would not interfere, actually, it would not interfere with our abutters or even the, the, the businesses on the other side of Dobson Way.
Any questions? Unnecessary hardship. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application that the provision to the property because...
Jason, you want to handle that one?
Actually, I think you just read it earlier.
I did. Oh. Oh, justice. The hardship upon the applicant where the, where the variance to be denied is not outweighed by some benefit to the general public in denying the requested variance.
Why?
That was...
You restated the question I just asked you.
That was the answer. Which one? Oh, where the, where the variance to be... The special condition of the property is the fact that it is a lease parcel that currently has a ground sign which advertises tenants for an abutting shopping center. Because of this special condition, the property cannot be reasonably be used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary to enable to have a reasonable use.
How does that...
That's not the one.
No.
The special condition of the property is, in fact, that it is a narrow corner lot which distinguishes it from other properties in the area. Because of this special condition, the property cannot be reasonably be used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary to enable to have a reasonable use.
How does that...
That's not the one.
No.
The special condition of the property is, in fact, that it is a narrow corner lot which distinguishes it from other properties in the area. Because of this special condition, the property cannot be reasonably be used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary to enable to have a reasonable use. The use of the property for a retail bank...
You could read that in. That's the second question.
That's the second question.
No, 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 no. That, the next question is, the proposed use is reasonable one because, and that's your answer right there. So if you just want to read that into record for us.
The use of the property for a retail bank branch or a drive-through facility is certainly a reasonable use and one allowed by the zoning ordinance. In addition, given the size and dimensions of the subject parcel, its development potential is limited, which is why it has remained vacant since the abutting shopping center was first constructed and has generated minimal economic benefit to the town of Merrimack as a result.
Thank you. Any questions? Anybody, so I'll open up the public hearing. If anybody wants to speak in favor? Anybody wants to speak against? Close the public hearing. Discussions, motions, questions, thoughts?
I'd like to motion to grant the variance to Franklin Savings Bank and KRG Merrimack Village LLC owner, variance under section 17.10.3B of the zoning ordinance to permit a ground sign within 20 feet of the right-of-way. The parcel is located at 1 Dobson Way in the C2 General Commercial and Aquifer Conservation District. Tax map 4D Lot 80, case 2017-02. And...
No social...
No staff recommendations, so...
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Stay 400. Gentlemen, congratulations.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is this on?
Yes.
Forgive the quality of the presentation. Really appreciate your support on this. It means a lot to the bank and to our success, and we appreciate all the town that's done to work with us thus far, so, thank you.
Welcome to Merrimack. Congratulations. You do have 30 days in which somebody can appeal, so if you do do your construction in the next 30 days, which I don't think you will because it's the winter, but who knows, someone can appeal it. Otherwise, welcome to Merrimack. It's a pleasure to have you here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, next step, action items. Jillian.
I have no discussion or other actions.
No discussion or other actions. All right.
So discussion. Were there, I know I missed a few meetings, were there notable changes in this book that we should consider? That, just curious.
In the new land use regulation?
He's looking for the Cliff Notes, because he doesn't want to read it. We all have to read it. There's a book report due next week.
I, I don't have Cliff Notes off the top of my head, but I can certainly summarize some of the notable changes for the board for the next meeting, if that would help.
Okay. Now, I, I, actually, that was more just a curiosity question. I'm okay with it. I just, I don't want to make you do more homework.
No, actually, and he does bring up a good point. Does this bring out any of the new criteria regarding ADUs?
We, we've already instituted the revisions to the ordinance for ADUs, and that, that went into effect in October. I believe Rich was here when we were talking about what those changes would be, but they actually were adopted by the town in October, so all the new changes to ADUs are in our current zoning ordinance.
I haven't been here since August.
What about, what about the...
Yeah, it was in the works before then.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
What about the state? Is the state debate on ADUs, isn't there, aren't they making some changes?
They have, but they haven't come up yet.
Okay.
So basically, the changes that were instituted is that if someone comes in to our office requesting or proposing an ADU that meets the criteria in the ordinance, they, they are permitted to, to do that without coming before the zoning board. If they don't meet the criteria for any reason, then they either come to the zoning board or the planning board, depending on what it is they're proposing, and if they're proposing to break the ordinance.
Just out of curiosity, since they, since we've done, since those changes have been made, have there been a lot of ADUs come through that we haven't seen? Do you know of?
I want to say there's been two or three that we've seen.
That we would have seen otherwise here.
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Approval of the minutes, December 2000...
One other question.
Oh, one other question.
One other question, yeah, because now that I'm back, it's extended meeting time. Sorry.
No, 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 hey. Your turn, start.
No, just real quick. I, I understand that it's our due diligence to read through the materials and make sure we're well-prepared, but just, if please, if it's possible, to make sure that we have the points of law. I, I just, I feel bad for the, you know, because they were winging it, and I think that maybe they forgot it, and...
I apologize, because I, I do normally look through to make sure that there's at least a blank copy in, in the applications, and it was just overlooked this time. But we will try to have those in the future.
No, and Rich has saved the day, so thanks for having that.
No problem.
Because I don't, as, as many variances as I've seen, I don't remember them all off the top, all the questions off the top of my head, I should know those.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So approval of the minutes, December, unless there's anything else? All right.
No, and I, again, like I said, you know, I should have read through it and said, wait a minute, I don't know what I'm looking at, and I didn't, so I'm not criticizing, just asking politely.
Approval of the minutes, December 2... Yes.
I move they be postponed until we have at least three of the attending members present.
Ah, that would be, yes, we're going to have to postpone the approval of that. Because the other two voting members here are, are, we're not at the meeting. So...
Oh.
Do I have to make a motion to do that? Motion to postpone the approval of the minutes? Can I have a motion? Can I have a second?
I'll give you a second on that one.
I'll motion to move the minutes approval to the next meeting.
So Rich is the motion, Tony is the second, and then...
My famous motion?
Yeah, famous motion.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah. Motion approved.